Okay, it's nine o'clock. Back from this meeting. It's Wednesday, April sixteenth, twenty twenty five. The regular meeting for the Board of Directors at MUD. We have a quorum. We have eleven items on the agenda.
I would be glad to.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome all the guests.
Ask if everybody signed in, please.
Has everyone signed in, all the guests? Everyone signed in? Okay, that's what Randy, you didn't hear.
Item number three, reading and approved minutes from March nineteenth, twenty twenty five, regular meeting.
I'm gonna go. Fort Clark Municipal Utility District, March nineteenth, twenty twenty five, regular board meeting minutes. State of Texas County of Kenny, Fort Clark Municipal Utility District. The Board of Directors of said district convened at regular board meeting at Fort Clark Municipal Utility District Board Room at nine AM on March nineteenth, duly given according to section forty-nine point oh six-three of the Texas Water Code and the Open Meeting Act, Chapter five-five-one Texas Government Code. President Serna called the meeting to order at nine AM. The following members were in attendance in person and constituted a quorum. Felix M. Serna, President. Steve Crosby, Vice President. Barbara Eckenrod, Secretary. Director Tanya Seeny and Director Travis Hury were not in attendance. Two guests were present. Director Eckenrod led the pledge of allegiance. General Accountant Roxanne led minutes for February nineteenth, twenty twenty five, regular board meeting. Director Eckenrod moved to approve minutes with corrections. Second motion carried by Director Crosby carried unanimous. Manager Castillo reported well levels at nine feet four inches static and ten feet six inches pumping. The leakage rate was thirty-six percent. The Texas Water Utility District Utility Association meeting will be held in Uvalde. North Star drilled into a water line in unit twenty-one, repaired a service line under a driveway in unit fourteen. Director Eckenrod motioned to reject the bid by Chad Potts at of one thirty-four KCAD in trust property. Second motion carried by Director Crosby carried unanimous. President Serna requested to move to agenda item seven, other for discussion. Guests were asked if they had any comments or would like to share information with the board. Move back to line item six, financial report. General Accountant Roxanne presented the February twenty twenty five general fund month and year. Water sold in January twenty twenty five versus twenty twenty four, the debt service financial report. The monthly bills and checks were presented to sign. Director Eckenrod moved to approve the February twenty twenty five financial reports as presented. Second motion carried out by Director Crosby carried unanimous. This concluded the business and meeting adjourned at nine thirty-five pursuant to motion made by Director Crosby. Second motion carried by Director Eckenrod carried unanimous. Minutes approved and certified to be true and correct and to correctly reflect the acts of Dewey constituted by members and officers of the Board of Directors.
Are there any corrections for minutes? additions? Any taking a motion?
I'm maybe we accept the minutes as presented for March nineteen twenty twenty five, regular board meeting.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
I'll second.
One extension?
That wasn't here.
Yeah, that wasn't, well, yeah, you weren't here either. No, you may want a second. Roxanne, did you get? Okay.
Eckenrod and Crosby.
We had two additions, okay. This will happen.
We had a quorum.
Quorum.
Yeah.
Thank you. Item number four, General Managers Report.
Well, levels have dropped five feet. We were at nine-four last month. We're at fourteen-four this month, static. Pumping is fifteen-eight. I don't know how the leak rate came down with everything that was busted last month, but the leak rate coming down from thirty-six percent to thirty percent. The TWA meeting will be held tonight in Crystal City. They're wrapping a really nice barbecue pit. Just too bad there's no more tickets available. But just so everybody knows that these pits will be raffled and it goes into Texas Water Utilities Association Training Fund for people to train themselves. And that's all I have right now.
Any questions for Randy? Thank you, Randy. Item number five, consideration possible action on request to purchase trust properties by Fort Clark Springs Association with a bid of eighteen thousand to purchase one thirty-four KCAD and trust properties for Clark Springs undeveloped lots.
Okay, we've been going over this for several months. I know that we accept bid by Fort Clark Springs. It's about ten thousand dollars. I second.
I have a motion and a second.
Let's get it on the tax.
Can we get to the session, sir?
Sure.
You don't want?
He wants to discuss it.
Agreed.
Bid is dead. We can't accept this bid.
Why?
Because the school board and the water district have already voted down their bid.
Well, that's their vote. Our vote is. Yeah, we still have.
That's fair. I'm just saying, we still have to vote, but if we accept, I mean, nothing's gonna happen, so we're not achieving anything that we're trying to achieve.
But it's not an issue. I think it's still because it's a line item. It has to be voted on. And I vote that we get it back on the tax rolls and this is the first. Yep, let's move on.
That's.
Yeah, and whatever happens, that's Mr. Tate's doing. And I mean, he can handle it from there, but I think we need to, we may have some discussion on that. That, anyway.
A motion and a second.
Unless there's more discussion, there's something.
Any discussion?
Ms. Eckenrod, you made that motion?
I did. I second.
I see any seconds. Take a vote on it, sir.
All in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
Does that mean you are rejecting Chad's offer? Well, his second line item.
We're not in a bidding. We're just gonna go.
Item number six, consideration possible action on request to purchase trust properties by Chad Potts with a bid of eighteen thousand five hundred dollars. Purchase one thirty-four KCAD and trust properties for Clark Springs undeveloped lots. And this is on our agenda. We request it, so we have to take action.
Well, I make a motion to move that we reject the offer for Chad Potts for eighteen thousand five hundred dollars. Since we just accepted it on line item. On item.
I have a motion. I have a second.
Mr. Crosby.
All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
It's dead. Nothing's happened, so you just, you just killed eighteen thousand five hundred dollars.
We got more money, don't we? Yeah.
Item number seven, present review, approve twenty twenty five first quarter investment report. Roxy's not here. Roxy's right there. Oh, one progression here.
So we have three CDs. For what month is ICD? The current balance on CD number one is thirty-three thousand twenty-six cents. And then the maturity date on that is July seventh, twenty twenty five, with an interest rate of three point seven five percent. CD number two, current balance is fifty-four thousand five hundred six dollars and sixteen cents. Maturity date on that is July seventh, twenty twenty six, with an interest rate of three point five percent. Your current balance of CD number three is twenty-three thousand three hundred twenty dollars and three cents. Maturity date on that is April twenty-fifth of this year, with an interest rate of twelve point two five. And of course, we think with the big good trust. That's all I have right now.
What are the interest rates now? Have you checked? These are pretty good.
Yeah, I think these are good.
Luckily, we have something.
These are what they're referred to as lobby rates. This is what MUD receives from the bank at the time of the maturity. Depending on what we wanna, what term we wanna do, which is six months, year, eighteen months, just depends on what we accept. So CD one is three point seven five, that's for six months. CD two is three point five, that's eighteen months. CD number three is four point two five, that's for a hundred and eight days.
And the one for April twenty-fifth, is it, does it renew by itself or what? Because it's gonna be like.
They automatically, unless we try to get a better rate.
Yes. And we do, I go up there and do.
Okay.
We do have, what, ten days after the due date?
Yes.
Negotiate. Any other questions for Roxy?
Is this need a motion?
Yes.
I know that we accept twenty twenty five first quarter investment report as presented.
I have a motion, but I have a second.
You have a second, Crosby?
All those in favor? Thank you, Roxy. Item number eight, present review and approve proposed twenty twenty five first quarterly budget amendment.
Okay, so I did bring an Excel spreadsheet to show January through December. This is just a proposal for line item four one-one-nine, which is the income reconnect, I'm sorry, four one-two-zero reconnect me. We didn't have a budget in there. This is brand new. This is something that the auditors request of us to add under the income, because it never was. It was just under just adjustments. So proposal is three thousand to be added to that line item, which will increase the total income from six hundred and seventy-four thousand to six hundred and seventy-seven thousand. Under the expenses, salary, expense six one-one-zero salaries and we just maintenance. We were at a hundred and ten thousand. However, we did move money to a different line item, which brought it down to eighty-five thousand. As of right now, we only have two maintenance, two people that fall under maintenance, which is our CD and people. If we do end up hiring somebody for the summer, then we could add money back. If not, then we can use that money for something else. Maintenance and repair vehicle sixty-one forty-seven. We added four thousand dollars to that line item, which brought it to eight thousand. We're always doing maintenance and repair for vehicles, so that's something that I did look back last year and figured we would need for this remainder of the year. Repair me and sewer. Again, we should spend, what was it, around here, like eight thousand already for the pump?
Yes.
So we did decide to add more money to bring it up from fifteen thousand to twenty thousand for necessary expenses and things else. For salary and wages for admin, since we did get a cost of living, we did increase it from one forty to one forty-five for the year. To the next, to the second page, computer hardware sixty-three sixty, we did purchase two desktop computers at the end of last year. However, we weren't sent the bill until January. So we did have to increase that from fifteen hundred to six thousand, which brought seventy-three oh six capital outlay from seven-four thousand to eighty-three thousand seven hundred. And that's due to the salary maintenance that was taken from that line item to capital out. Just to remind y'all, three thousand dollars was increased for both income and expenses. I'm not sure. So again, this is just proposed if y'all decide you don't want to make any other adjustments or suggestions.
These amendments are all within our budget. We're transferring from one category to another.
Right, just keeping the budget balanced. I would do what, I would like to say line item number sixty-one. What do you want? I can't really see them. Remains and repairs and water. We are gonna start a program stabbing some valves through this spring and suggest the money we have maintenance and repairs and water, we leave it there for a while until we get this, what I wanna do with these valves done, you know, so. Just, just the two valves that we are putting in and by the water towers is over three thousand dollars. Just to give you an idea, you know, how fast this will add up once we start this program.
We may have to add more money to that.
Yes.
Yes.
But the infrastructure in the front of this fort, we've gotta get this to where we can isolate areas in front of the fort and some valves. We know we're having problems within the distribution. You know, while we got the money and while, before it gets too damn hot for me to be out.
Is that anywhere else on the fort? Do we have any type of setup like that to where you can cut off or? I know you probably, most probably in units.
Most of the newer, most of the newer units do isolate and do shut down. Now, the last couple of times we've had problems in unit thirty-one, which is back behind unit fifteen back in there. We do have a couple of valves down in there that we didn't get shut down all the way. We can get them shut down enough that we can work in them. But I'd like to be able to isolate where we can, we can fix things without having to turn off the towers and turn off the whole fort. And luckily, I think we can get this one without shutting off the towers. But if we get in a bind, we're gonna shut it down, but I think we can do it. We're gonna get wet, but I think we can do it.
Any other questions? Need a motion?
I like a motion.
I have a motion.
Do you accept?
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. I'll load your payment. Yeah, thank you. Item number nine, present, we approve financial monthly report bills for March twenty twenty five and sign check. If, and I can jump to other discussion. Is there any other discussion?
I do have two items.
Okay.
I just got.
All right, go ahead and skip the number ten. Other discussion, taking the line check.
Okay, on Monday, the city of Bracketville brought out the New Oasis River Authority and Success Engineering. And they have applied for a safe grant, Safe Roads for, it's called Safe Roads for All. There's, it's a two-part grant. So one is a demonstration study and then the second is implementation. So what they're trying to do, and that specific grant, they are focusing on several areas around the school that have traffic issues. And so they're gonna do traffic studies next week from the twenty-third and twenty-fourth, and they'll collect data on speeding numbers, pedestrian counts, so on and so forth. From that, those two companies, New Oasis River Authority and the engineering company will come back and make recommendations as to what they should apply for in the implementation grant. So because we own the roads, we're eligible for that as well as the utility district.
This is not at the school?
It is at the school.
I didn't know we owned those roads.
No, 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 no. This is, this is just being done by the city of Bracketville. But I spoke to the grant writers and as a political subdivision, as a utility district, we qualify for the same program.
Okay.
So what I would like to do is connect, second part of this. A few weeks ago, I spoke with a gentleman who just sold his MUD consulting company. So, you know, in the bigger metropolitan areas, they don't even name the MUDs. They don't have a Randy. They don't have, you know, all of group, all of our team. They just come in with a management team. So, and they just number them, right? It's MUD four, five, six, four, five, eight, you know, so on and so forth. And so I was asking him, you know, when you have that situation, how do you get anything done, you know, with your boards and all that? You meet once a month, what do you do? His suggestion was to put together committees. And so my request would be that we just send out a blast on our new texting system, asking for people that would like to participate on a committee. And then in our next meeting, if we have people that are interested, that would be the group that would look at these road programs and then bring the full picture to the board and see what we can actually do. I mean, it's a rotating cycle and so putting together kind of a roads committee would be the request. And then we'll come up with these recommendations. And the reason for that is if we, if we were to form the committee, we would then have a forum and then that would be an issue. So this is the way so that citizens can have input, stakeholders, and then you have one or two board members and then they bring all this back to the board, you know, if there's any action to take. So that would be.
When do they do, when do they start this?
Excuse me?
When is this gonna be reviewed or when are they gonna begin?
We've missed the cycle for this year, for that.
Oh, okay.
We've gotta get ready for the next year. So, but we need a committee to bring all this information and give a presentation to the board to say, yes, we want to do this, no, we don't want to do this. Find out, you know, Randy's thoughts and based on what his schedule is, what projects he has. I mean, if he's got, you know, if this valve project goes into a larger deal and he doesn't have the time, then we need to wait for the next cycle to do this, so.
So this needs to be brought up, recommended as on the agenda item, as an agenda item to approve.
Right, well, we have to approve committee members. So if we can just, over the next month, ask for the committee members. If there is interest, then we can bring those people to the board in the next meeting.
Okay, you don't think we need to have a vote on forming the committee?
Well, we.
As a line item?
Forming the committee, we're just asking for interest.
Okay.
On any, maybe, maybe, he's saying, just put it out there to see if anybody comes down and says, yeah, did you want to work serve on this committee?
Okay. And then we go.
How do we get this information out?
Through our texting program.
Yeah.
You have that information on?
Yes, I can, I can give that to Roxy and then we can just send out a little blurb and if we get interest, right? If we don't, then we don't need an action item because we don't.
Yeah.
You know, we don't have the biggest staff, so anything we can get help from our, through our staff would definitely be beneficial.
Definitely.
Travis, did you, by chance, put the text thing on the newspaper?
I have not yet, but I can do that, yes.
Because we don't really have any people that have.
It's not dead. So you have, how do you sign up for it?
There's a QR code that I sent out and I can get everybody to do it right now.
Okay.
So if there is interest and seeing if there's interest, then.
I think that's a good idea.
And we'll see what it looks like. I mean, we may not get anyone. Then I'll have to do it. So.
Is it just for people that live on the boards? Are you talking about or just any?
Utility district members.
The people, people that are members of the water that serve, get their service for MUD.
Yeah.
If you have a MUD account, then we would ask if you would like to serve as the MUD, MUD owns the roads.
Because we can help.
I think, I think there should be somebody from the fort on the committee.
We would definitely dispatch that out there before you all.
I, I just wanna thank all of y'all for supporting us on this big day and I look forward to working more closely with MUD in the future on a lot of different things. Thank you.
Yeah, just let us know and I'll, I'll fill, I'll, whatever you want me to.
I was gonna say. So can you, also in your dispatch, let them know about this QR codes?
Do you wanna send me that you're, the QR, whatever you wanna send me, we can dispatch.
It's just, you don't read it. You don't read it. I mean.
Dispatch, I do, I read.
Whenever we sent out the notices of the rate order or the rate increase, we sent out just one single paper that shows everything of the rates and then we added the QR codes, but we haven't had any of that.
Let us try, because we can put it on Facebook, we can send on dispatch, and then we have the new HOA building that we can also send out through there. So we've got three avenues that we can help you. I'm sure you'll get some feedback.
It takes a little bit off.
So who would be a good committee member for that? Would it need to be someone who either has knowledge of grants or has knowledge of roads? Or, because I'm thinking another thing is word of mouth. I'm sitting here thinking, who do I know?
From the perspective of that, you know, it would be, we've got the grant writers that have that knowledge. We've got the engineers that know the road knowledge. I need people that know where the problems are.
Unit fourteen.
Yeah. Yeah, so, and, and these are specifically safety issues, not, not, you know.
Like where a road situation is endangering, say.
Right.
Potential for a wreck.
Yeah. And, and the, the, from what I heard in the meeting on Monday, whenever you can, and this is with everything with TWV, any TCQ, any of those things that you're looking at, the more things that it affects and the more, like, the deeper it gets into the community. And I'll say right now, one of the places that I think is going to be, you know, high on that list, because it fits all of those things. You've got the theater, you've got the volunteer sharing, you've got the adult center, is going to be the issue on Fort Clark Road between the stop sign and Scales Road. So you've gotta build the case around that. You know, the kids, like, so going into unit fifteen, there's a bus stop there. Well, that's gonna be high on the list, right? You know, you've gotta kind of build that case or, like, coming out of the Oaks, that's kind of a blind.
We have a bus stop there and we have to sit, eat the bus there every single day.
And it's, and it's a blind kind of area going back, if you're looking back to the left, depending on, on what.
Right, there's a little bit, a little bit of.
Right.
So Travis, this is not related to necessarily, even though it involves roads. It's related more to the health and well-being of our children. Is this is related to?
Community in general, but children always go higher on the list.
They're safe roads. It's the names.
Safe roads, but yeah.
That's the name, Safe Roads for All.
And one of the projects the state's trying to do is close Fulton Street between the school buildings.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so they're trying to figure out how they would, if they did that, what are they gonna, I mean, what are they gonna do with the drainage? How is it going to affect? One of the concerns on Monday was, okay, we shut this down, then everyone's gotta use the next road. Well, that road's in terrible condition, so, you know, now you just, you gotta kind of look through exactly what's gonna happen whenever you do that. So there's a, it's a long process, but.
There was a proposal out there for a while for an elevated crosswalk.
And they talked about that and they talked about how that's not feasible.
That's way too expensive.
Yeah, so, yeah. So that was mentioned at the meeting as well and they've got some other areas, you know, crossing over from the school to the tennis courts. That's a big issue. You gotta cross for the football stadium, for the tennis courts, for the avenue. So they're gonna look at some ways to kind of break that, break that down. So I would encourage you on the twenty-third and twenty-fourth, just to drive down Ann Street and see what it looks like. You'll see the machines out there, they put up cones. That's where they're, they're starting their study.
Thank you, Travis.
And then one other item. At the annual meeting of the association, the two audit reports were released for the last year. The line items specifically that are concerning to me for the utility district because of our audit, line item or paragraph J was talking about the financial health of the citizens of the district, which are Fort Clark and all of those people. The utility taxes that were paid to us do not match what we were paid. So.
Wait a minute, stop. So, so what? The appraisal district says they paid us, don't match what we received?
No, does not match what the audit of the finances of the association say that they paid.
Oh, I see.
So the two numbers do not match up.
I see, what the association paid to the tax office.
Yes.
Don't match what, and what we received.
Yes.
Gotcha.
So I, I think that we want to get, you know, something over to the association so that they can help us understand the difference. That's what, you know, our, our. you know, our, our basis is built on our customers and that's our largest customer. So, um, I'd like to understand further why those numbers don't match. It could be as simple as classification. Like, that's fine.
Some kind of breakdown.
Right. All right. So um, with, I think, since Roxy handles that and works with our accountants and audits, um, and you know, I can help her put that letter together, but we just need a letter asking for clarification. Also, I mean, there's no action to take. It's just, we need.
Clarification.
That's all I got.
I have one thing. The audit's ready. We need to call a special meeting to get our audit approved so we can get it submitted to the state. And I just need to know a date when everybody can get together and we can get this done.
Does she want to do it this month and April? Get it done now?
I think the sooner we get it done, the better.
Okay.
I don't know what everybody's schedule looks like for next week or. If we post by Friday, we can meet next Wednesday. If Wesley don't work, we can meet Thursday.
Thursday.
Next week.
Well, why don't, I'll be gone on Thursday. Thursday, I'll be gone the rest of that week from Thursday on.
Tennessee. So the next week probably.
That's not good.
Yeah.
What about the twenty-eighth?
Anytime.
I have, I've got another trip to Alpine. I won't be, I, I, I won't be back until first.
We can't wait for May's meeting.
We can have it the week before our meeting.
So you're in Alpine on the twenty-first and twenty-eighth, the weeks of the twenty-first.
Yeah, I am pretty much. I'm back on the first.
Why don't we shoot for the first of May somewhere there, first week of May?
Thursday, or the first week would be the fifth, sixth, somewhere in there.
I'm okay with.
I'm okay with the seventh. I'm okay with the seventh.
We'll do it. We'll call it. Special meeting for seven. What, what day?
The seventh of May.
I'll let Debbie know.
That morning?
Oh, yeah, ten. So you can.
Yeah, cause she's got to come over.
Okay, so it's going to be at ten.
Saturday, I mean, special meeting Wednesday, May the seventh at ten o'clock.
Got it.
Thank you.
Anything else to discuss? Okay, then we'll go back to item number nine, financial report, monthly bills for March. Time check.
Okay, I'll go, go over the ballot sheet as of March thirty first, twenty twenty five. Um, assets for our cash account, just turn normal checking account reviews, checking bills and everything. Um, last year we were at two hundred and sixteen thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars and seventy cents. Just now we're sitting at two hundred and eighty three thousand, five hundred and ninety nine dollars and eighty six. Our reserve account last year, we were sitting at a hundred and twenty-two thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars and five cents. This year we're at a hundred and twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars and twenty-seven cents. CD. Last year we're at eight five thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars and sixty-five cents. This year, eighty-six thousand, six, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars and forty-one cents. Um, total assets for last year, four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy six dollars and ninety-six, twenty-six cents. This year, you're at five hundred and sixty-one thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars, dollars and sixty-two cents. Accounts payable liability last year, four thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars and eighty-one cents. This year, two thousand, five hundred and eighty-six dollars and fifty-eight cents. Um, another liability, which is credit card, last year we were at two thousand, two hundred and seventy-two dollars and twenty-six cents. This year, one thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fifty cents. Other current liabilities, twenty-eight thousand, forty-seven dollars and eighty cents. The last year, this year, fifty-five thousand, a hundred and fifty-one dollars and thirty-five cents. So the total um, equity is five hundred and six thousand, one hundred and eighty-four and twenty-seven cents. To, to the liabilities and equity, five hundred and sixty-one thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars and twenty-two cents. Last year, we're sitting at four hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars, eight hundred and seventy-six, ninety-six. I'm going to go to the next report, cash dispersment for March twenty twenty-five. Total, twenty thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifty-four cents. Um, I would say the vendors that would be out of the ordinary would be Texas unclaimed property payments. We did send out, um, we reissued refund checks to customers that never cashed their um, refund checks over the years, probably the past three to four years. They were sent out um, to, you know, customers that did reach back out to me and customers that I finally got hold of and others that didn't. So we sent it out to the Texas unclaimed property. Uh, and it shows me amount here. Um, the other thing that possibly would be out of the ordinary, you know, you know, that would be it. But, that's it actually. Last year, March twenty twenty-four, twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and four dollars and nine cents. Um, we did purchase chemicals at this time, metropolitan compounds. That amount was one thousand, seven hundred and seventy, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars and thirty-eight cents. Um, we also paid Kenny County for the contract for the elections, two thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars. The one trucking, we did purchase base and sand material at nine hundred and fifty dollars. So that total, four thousand, nine hundred and forty-one dollars and thirty-eight cents. So last year we were over at twenty-five thousand. This year we're at twenty thousand. So I just wanted to break down to let you know what exactly, why it was higher last year. Next report, the profit and loss for March of twenty twenty-five. We sold six hundred and six million. Total income from March is point five thousand, two hundred and seventy-one dollars and seventy-one cents. January through March, a hundred and forty-seven thousand, nine hundred and nineteen dollars and seventeen cents. Total expense, twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars and ninety-eight cents. Total expense from Ja- January through March of twenty twenty-five, a hundred and fifty-two thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty-eight cents. Net income of fifteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars and seventy-three cents. I just want to go over last year, March of twenty twenty-four. We sold seven point seven million. Total income, forty-six thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars and twenty-two cents. Total expense, thirty-five thousand, three hundred, two hundred and eighty-five, eight, eight, nine cents. And net loss of eleven thousand, a hundred and eighty dollars and sixty-three cents. Next report, profit and loss budget versus actual. This is from January through March. Um, water sold eighteen million, point two. Um, total expense, a hundred and forty-seven thousand, nine hundred and nineteen dollars and seventeen cents. We are at twenty-one point nine percent for the year. Um, for expenses, I know I just went over that, but a hundred and fifty-two thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty-eight cents with a net loss of four thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars and forty-one cents. Um, just to go over the um, expenses. We've already paid out sixty-three twenty-seven T C Q regulatory assessment fee, that was paid out in January. And then sixty-two fifty purchased sewer service. We do have one last bond payment, which is in August. And so that line item will be paid. Um, everything else, we've already gone over the, an acceptance of proposed budget. So I just want y'all to look over, you know, percentage wise for under the expenses and why we moved money the way we did. That's all I have for, that's the down low funds. And then the debt service, profit and loss or income will be brought in from the appraisal district as of right now, January through March, thirty-nine thousand, thirty-three dollars and fifty-five cents. For March itself, three thousand, eight hundred and forty, forty-nine dollars and thirty-one cents. Um, expenses, tax accessory, we paid out two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars and thirty-three cents. Um, expenses for bonds, on interest expense, twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars and fifty cents. Bond principal, a hundred and seventy thousand. And Travis, now I know what you're talking about. So there are fiscal years, January through December, but ours is, I'm sorry, ours is January through December. Yours is from October through September. So that's why the numbers are.
The fiscal years are different.
Yes.
The.
Well, that makes sense. Our physical.
I mean, okay, so that would mean that your records would indicate January to December.
That would.
But that's not what the taxes are.
But yes, they are. Their, their fiscal year may go from October through September, but their payment is for January through December. It just happens to happen. It just happens to start in October and can be paid as late as March. So yes, the fiscal years are different, but the payments actually coincide with what our calendar is.
They have been in past years too. They've been, everything's been fine in past years. It's just this year.
So going, we have to go back and look. I, I think, I fully think that it is something that is just put in a different classification. But it's important because it's significantly more that what's being said is being paid. And I mean, this has implications on both sides of the, of the fence. So um, I don't know, I.
I agree. It needs to be reconciled one way or the other, whatever it is.
Right. Right.
We, we have to know what, what it is. But I think it'd be good to look to see if it was that way in previous years as well.
We have two years worth of audits.
Okay.
You have a question?
You can entertain a motion on line nine.
Yeah, but I was going to wait till we sign the check.
I hope you pass on that charge.
All right, please, if we go on item nine, present review of financial reports. Lucky. Good point.
I move that we approve the financial report and then pay the monthly bills for the month of March.
As presented?
As presented.
And I'll second. And we have a second. I'll lose the favor. In Adam's seconds.
So I hate to bring up a bad subject, but when do we're, the twenty-five, we go into drought restriction, right?
Twenty-five feet. Yeah. No, don't worry. It's going to rain for Easter and everybody's going to be crying because it rained on Easter.
They're predicting rain, but I see it, but you know, sometimes it doesn't happen.
It's going to rain. Keep praying.
I am.
Sign off. I'm sure everything has three.
I don't know if there's, is there just one thing to sign in this?
Yes. Yes. It's just the full American Express though. It just shows, it just happened.
Pass it on back. I'll make sure they have. Give the members their vote. Need one more.
I'll sign that when you're three.
Anybody want to come swimming with us?
Be out there.
I, I, I think it would be good for everybody to at least go by the job site, see what we're doing.
I agree.
Yeah.
Where is that?
It's right here in front of the water towers. Right? As soon as you get to the top of it, he'll just take that first right.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
We thought we were going to have to shut down the piston to get that done, but I think we can choke it down enough. It would skip weight.
Well, down in danger.
No, it's, we, we already opened them both. We already opened them both up. So it's just a matter of doing it now.
Is now a time when I can say something?
Yeah.
Yeah.
She's like.
Is now time when I can say something?
Yes.
Okay. So first of all, I kind of wish you guys would put somewhere on your agenda, a place for public comment.
It is. Isn't it other for discussion? Is that public comments as well?
Okay. I, I guess because I didn't know that. I always feel like I'm always afraid that I'm being inappropriate when I ask if I can say something because I'm not sure when I'm supposed to.
It'd be better if he'd say it for other for discussion. Yes.
Okay. Well, just, just add why you guys have always been so gracious to listen to me, but I don't ever want to like speak at the wrong time. And the other thing I want to say is thank you on the way you guys voted with these two proposals. And just as a citizen who resides here and has been stationed in this the idea of treating it as, oh, this is five hundred dollars more. To me, I, I don't know the legalities and I know that you all have to deal with the legalities as do the other taxing authorities. I understand that, but I just, I appreciate the way you voted because it's not apples and, it's not apples and apples. Like one option represents an existential threat to our community because allowing one individual to, as again, as I understand the legalities to have that kind of control in our community. It's not just like spinning it off the tax route and see how much money we can get. So I just want to say, thank you for that. Thank you guys.
Thank you for your comments and for coming today.
This is, this is not, those are the lot.
Those are the lots.
I have not seen that. I've just heard it.
I'm ready to go swimming.
Are you going down there now?
I'm going to go change my clothes and go up there. Yes. Yeah, put on the bathing shoe. Maybe it's my swim trunks.
Can I make a motion?
Yes.
Are we done? Put it away.
I'm, I'm, I have to ask for Miss.
Sorry, Mike.
Google is low. Not mine at home. Oh, okay. I put new supplies, new sand in my filter and filled it up. The city's going to love me.
Mr. Serta?
Felix, we've all got things.
Felix, Felix.
Can we make a, can I make a motion? She needs to run. Can she make a motion to John?
Check the same. All checkers, I guess.
And saying the motion will adjourn.
I move that we adjourn and he second.
I can second. All of the table.
Yes. Thank you.
Line forty-seven.
Tonya and Shaw's D.
But.
At nine thirty-seven.
Thank you, everybody. Have a nice week. I'll see if I can get this meeting set up for me, the servant.